I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Beatrice City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted in the meeting room and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First of all, it's my pleasure to welcome some young people who are the honorary mayor for the day in Beatrice. Congratulations to all of you. On April 16th, you participated in the great American cleanup elementary school Clean Your Block Party by picking up litter in your neighborhood, and your name was drawn as the honorary mayor for the day from your respective schools. Those that are receiving the honor include Gabby Long, who is in second grade. Gabby picked up trash on both sides of Ella Street from 14th to 18th Street. Gabby found cigarette packs, paper products, and aluminum cans. Paddock Lane Elementary winner was Carson Workman. Carson is in first grade. Carson picked up litter on Dorsey Street between 14th and 19th, that includes both sides of the streets, and Arthur Street from 10th to 14th. Carson found cans, bottles, newspapers, fast food bags, and cups. Annie Gleason is a third grader from Stoddard Elementary School. She picked up litter for 12 blocks along the east side of the golf course. Ally found, in addition to golf balls, aluminum cans, glass bottles, fast food snacks, cardboard, paper, and fast food cups. Saint Joseph's Catholic School honoree is Hannah Stedman. Hannah is in the fourth grade. She picked up trash behind Shopko. Hannah found bottles, plastic ribbons, and straws. And Waylon Overbeck, Saint Paul's Lutheran School, picked up litter in the alley behind Dairy Queen. Waylon found lots of fast food products, paper, and he also found a tire. Good job, Waylon. There is a tire amnesty in August of this year, so you can take that tire then. I do have certificates for all of you. I'm going to come out front and present those to you. I'm going to sit down because I'm older than you are.
You didn't have to tell him that.
I know. Not much taller, no?
First one is Gabby Long. Come on up. Come on this side of me. Close so that... Let's do it this way, Gabby. Hold that. All right. Just look at the camera. Ready? Smile. All right. Thanks, Gabby. Next one is Carson Workman. Carson? Found the golf balls, and you turned those in, didn't you? Or did you get them to Dad? Not saying. Hannah? Right here. Hold that. Easy. Okay? Got it? Did Mom get one?
Did you get one? It was blurry. Oh, no, I didn't.
Come on up. Hannah, come on up. Mom wanted one.
No, I did. I did.
Oh, you did get one?
Yep.
Okay, great. And the last but not least is Waylon Overbeck. Bring your tire with you, buddy. Right here. Right there, okay? Got it? Thank you to all of you today. I thank all of those for doing their part in trying to keep Beatrice beautiful and America beautiful. Also want to thank the parents and grandparents for your steadfast enthusiasm and encouragement to support this project. So, thank you very much. One more round of applause. Okay. Were that emptied of peanut gallery? Next item on the agenda is a series of proclamations, and I'll start with the first one. Arbor Day obviously was last week, however Arbor Day should continue throughout the year. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees; and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in the state of Nebraska; whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top soil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees are a renewable source giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products; and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I stand worth, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2016 as Arbor Day in the City of Beatrice, and I urge citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Witness my hand and seal of the City of Beatrice this second day of May, 2016. Is there anybody here to accept the proclamation? Okay. We'll make sure that that gets to our Parks Department. The next proclamation is Preservation Month. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable economic development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining unique community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of our heritage that have shaped us as a people and has resulted in an application for the listing of downtown Beatrice on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas this place matters shall be the theme of Preservation Month 2016 in Beatrice co-sponsored by Main Street Beatrice, Gage County Heritage Preservation, and National Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas historic preservation is done to save our heritage for our children. In Beatrice, they are encouraged to participate during the month of May by drawing the Beatrice building they think is historic. And whereas Main Street Beatrice is celebrating the National Preservation Month with the annual Mother's Day Landmark Tour to be held on Sunday, May 8th, beginning at 2:00 PM at the Carnegie Building located at 218 North 5th Street. Now therefore I stand worth, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, to proclaim May 16th... I beg your pardon. May 2016 as National Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Beatrice to stake their claim and join their fellow citizens across the United States in taking action, recognizing and participating in this special observance. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this second day of May, 2016. And Michael Suthan is with us today.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I guess with this, this is kind of an exciting year for Preservation Month here in Beatrice just because besides some of our normal activities, here on May 13th, we actually get to put the downtown Beatrice, the National Register District, before the State Historical Society and hopefully get their approval, and then it'll go on to the National Parks Service. So hopefully here by the summer, our downtown district will be on the National Register and bring about it some good tools for economic development and also some different tools just for promoting the downtown in general. One of the promotions that we end up doing is our Mother's Day Landmark Tour, and this year we're actually featuring some of the downtown buildings that are already on the National Register that were listed individually. So hope that folks can come out and join us. It's always a great event, a lot of fun. We usually have a pretty good crowd there on Mother's Day that just want to come out and check out what we have to offer downtown and learn a little bit of the history of our communities. So please do join us there on Sunday, May 8th from 2:00 to 4:30. Does anyone have any questions about what we have coming up?
Any questions? Any questions of Michael? Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you.
You bet. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation regarding Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for the economy, and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water; and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon from which generous future generations depend; and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore I stand worth, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2016 as Drinking Water Week. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this second day of May, 2016. Steve Kelly, Water Superintendent's with us?
Over the years, I started to work for the Water Department in 1972, and there's been dramatic changes not only in the regulations but in how we operate. And I took over as department head in 1990, and have a goal of mine is to provide safe drinking water to the citizens of Beatrice. And I feel we've accomplished that over the years. Have some great employees, and would like to thank the Mayor, the City Council, and BPW Board for their support. Thank you.
That's Steve. Any questions of Steve? Good job, Steve. Thanks. Thank you. And the last proclamation that we have is, and certainly not least, is Municipal Clerks' Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants; and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas the municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community; and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation and education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, Providence County, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore I stand worth, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, do recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2016 as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Aaron Sadoff, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their great dedication to the communities they represent. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this second day of May, 2016. Aaron?
Congratulations. Congratulations. How to go. I would just like to thank the Mayor and City Council for support and update on my becoming certified municipal clerk. It's about a four-year program. I'm in the second year of that, and will be attending the International Municipal... International Institute of Municipal Clerks 70th Annual Conference. It's in Omaha this year, the end of May, so I'm looking forward to that and that experience, and just want to thank you for your support.
Very good.
Any questions?
Thank you, Erin. Any questions? Yeah, Omaha? All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on April 18th, 2016 as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E, approval of minutes of work session meeting on April 25th, 2016 as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item F, approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the amount of $251,049.39. Item G, approval of Boswa Report of Claims in the amount of $7,447.85. Item H, award bid from R.L. Timman Construction, Inc. in the amount of $97,176.65 for flood debris removal 2016 project. Item I, approval of special designated license for Main Street Beatrice for a beer garden in the parking lot at 120 North 6th Street on June 20th, 2015, from 10:00 AM until 12:00 AM for the annual Rib Fest fundraiser, and permission to use a portion of the city right-of-way along the sidewalk of said parking lot. Item J, Resolution Number 5901, authorizing the Mayor to sign the substantial completion form for the Beatrice Public Library renovation project. Item K, Resolution Number 5902, authorizing city engineer and city clerk to execute the access agreement between the city and Legion Eagles Baseball, Inc., for the purpose of ingress and egress to the Christensen Baseball facility. And I think we came to the end. Mr. Catlin? Any items that anyone wants removed from the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Mayor, just... Well, the Treasurers' Report of Claims is the purchase of that parking lot down there, is that on this month's Treasurers' Claims?
No, I don't believe so.
No. Mr. Claybaugh?
Mayor, I'd like to abstain from I, please.
Okay, so noted.
Answer to answer is yes, it is on there.
I didn't see it.
Then I want to pull it.
Okay. Which one are you pulling?
He wants to pull...
H? No.
F.
F. Okay. All right, Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item F, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck. That all items under the Consent Agenda be approved with the exception of Item F. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0.
Mayor, I move that Item F, the approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims, in the amount of $251,049.39 be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the Treasurers' Report of Claims in the amount of $251,049.39 be approved. Discussion.
The reason I pulled this off was a $4,000 purchase of the parking lot down there on South 6th. I just wanted to vote against it to be on record because I didn't like the parking lot and the proposed buying of the elevator, so I just wanted to go on record to vote against it.
We're not buying an elevator. We bought a parking lot.
It's going to come. The elevator will come. The parking lot has been bought, and I just wanted it on record that I...
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved 7... To 1, sorry, with Councilman Kerr voting against. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive the semi-annual report of the Citizens' Advisory Review Committee as provided by Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act of 1943. Mr. Catlin? Sorry.
Mr. Jones?
Grant? Name it. Just name an address, please.
Grant Jones, 604 27th Circle here in Beatrice.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman and Mayor. Tonight I have a quick report for you. The CDBG fund of the CARC does not have much funds left in at this point. It's just a little under $12,000 for economic funds. Currently, Dog's Hut, or LMRR, LR, as their corporate name, is current on their payments that we have outstanding. Homestead Glass is pretty much current on theirs. Canned Hams is making payments but are behind, and the balloon payment for them isn't coming up for quite a while yet. The LB840 money that we have for the committee to oversee, it'll show on your financials about $870,000, but that's not an accurate number if we take out the earmarked portions that are forthcoming. You have a little over $237,000 in economic funds, and as we all know, that's not a lot, so just something to be mindful of, and we've not seen any applications since Landmark came through a few months back. Any questions for us?
Rich?
You said we got $200,000 left?
You have 870 in there, but when you take out the earmarks, about 237.
Is the money earmarked for that intersection out there?
The Street 6 Industrial Row, that intersection has been moved out of the LB840 funds and into the Street Department's budget.
Out of their reserves?
No, the Street Department is... They do have cash reserves, however, they have sufficient funds in their budget to handle that item without having to delay or postpone any other projects.
Are we going to have to push back any projects?
No, sir.
They're not part of the discussion, the LB840 dollars.
Ted?
Grant, I don't really have any questions, and I'm not alarmed by the amount. I think that's a good problem when you're spending it all for economic development. You know, that's what the dollars are there for. I guess the Reader's Digest version of that, I know Homestead Glass is pretty small. So when do you... When does your group anticipate the funds coming back to a level that we're used to seeing?
Well, the CDBG funds, even if we had all of them pay it back tomorrow, it's not a significant chunk. I think Canned Hams is the bulk of it, so that'll have a balloon payment at the end. And that's not for another two or three years, I want to say. And then of the LB840, going off memory, but somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 plus is that of a loan, not of forgivable money. So that has probably about a 10-year amortization on the balance or the bulk of that. $200,000 of it coming sooner, and then another $400,000 from Landmark. That'll be quite a while before we see it. So it's not money that was sent back out and isn't coming back. It just won't be coming back tomorrow. And Landmark had their first payment to us, was it last month? Yes. And they've already made that, and we don't foresee any problems with that, but it'll be a little while.
Any other questions? Grant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to close public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:24 PM.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that we close the public hearing at 7:24 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next item on the agenda, Item B, public hearing to consider declaring redevelopment Area Number 5 to be substandard and blighted within the definition set forth in the Community Development Law, Nebraska Revised Statute 18-2101. Mr. Butcher?
I'll take this one. As you'll see, included in your packet, beginning on page 45, we have a dual blight and substandard determination study and general redevelopment plan as generated by Hannah Kealan for redevelopment Area Number 5. Just to familiarize those at home, redevelopment Area 5 essentially takes up an area to the north bounded by Hickory Road west of Highway 77, which includes the North Gate Development and the Beatrice Hospital. It extends through the booster station to the east and then down through the corridor between the highway and the bike trail, behind most of the commercial development there to the south all the way down into a residential area that's a zone residential backed by Dorsey Street. So those are the general boundaries that make up, consist of most of the northeast section of the city, extreme northeast up by the highway corridor. Hannah Kealan prepared the blight and substandard study. They did find all the statutory requirements were on display in this area. They went through, they looked at each parcel, the buildings contained there on, and made their determination. That determination was forwarded by this body on to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which did have a public hearing on it as well and reviewed that determination. It did find a finding of blighted and substandard inconformity also with the comprehensive plan. That was then given on and forwarded on to CRA, which is Community Redevelopment Authority. They heard that item as well and also found it inconformity, and so we have brought it back to you here today. As you'll note, the declaration of blight and substandard is the first step in accessing TIP funding for economic development. So first you declare it blight and substandard, and then you apply a redevelopment plan over the top, which is going to be our next step, so...
Questions? Greg? Anybody from the public?
Joe's got a question.
Joe?
How does that affect the value of the houses there along Dorsey Street?
For the most part, you won't see terribly much increase or decrease at all. I did talk to a few realtors that contacted us, and they did say that they actually like when property is for sale that's included in a redevelopment area because it's one more tool for them to offer a potential buyer that they have that someone may not have in other places and areas in the city.
Ted?
So this isn't... Obviously, this is the first one of these that I've set through, but I don't know if I've ever asked, so... And if I have, I've forgotten, so I'm asking again. So it kind of spells out through here from page 59 back really what we're supposed to be doing as a municipality when this thing is designated this. There's certain steps that we need to do. Who actually monitors that? Are we self-checking? I mean, we're supposed... You know, these are the steps that we should be doing because the whole idea after you've designated this is to be able to bring it up.
Yes.
So do we self-police this? I mean, how...
What we will find is, and so in regards to the blight and substandard, the way that the law is designed is the hope is that the redevelopment area will bring it back up. And so what will happen is as we approve potentially the redevelopment area plan tonight, that will give us a very baseline general plan for what we're going to do. At that point, we'll wait, and a developer may come in, the city may be the developer, and we'll make an independent plan, which in this case would be Amendment A to this plan. Amendment A, we will make sure isn't conformity with the comprehensive plan. It'll be reviewed by all the bodies I already mentioned, and it'll come to this body, and we will basically self-police and ensure that this plan meets all the standards we set out here today. So self-policing essentially. We will be responsible for it.
Okay.
With the ultimate police being the comprehensive plan. All of this has to be in conformity.
I'm sure I've asked that before, but as I read through this, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Rick?
On toward the end, on like 109, you have the... You know, the talks about public and private foundations... On, towards the end on like 109, you have the, you know, the talks about public and private foundations and everything. And then I can understand all the public...
We're probably jumping ahead of ourselves. I think...
I've got to print it at all.
That gets into the redevelopment element of this, so... Anybody else in regards to the blighted substandard study?
Anybody from the public? All right, Mr. Catlin, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:29 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:29 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Next item is a public hearing for the adoption of the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number five. Anything?
I will add, again, this one was reviewed by both the Planning and Zoning Commission, which found it inconformity with the comprehensive plan, and also by the Community Redevelopment Authority, the CRA, who also found it inconformity with the comprehensive plan. To kind of get a general outlook of what that's gonna look like, I'd ask you to turn to page 105, which shows you the future zoning map and land uses. The ones that are identified there on both maps include a residential element down to the southern portion of it, which includes R2 development, which we already have, and then R4 element to the north of that. That is exactly the plan, the comprehensive plan also would like to see. And then as you see, as you move to the north, you see more general commercial. Obviously, we have the Indian Creek floodway in there. And then we move along the highway corridor up into the office areas near the hospital and then the general commercial area that makes up North Gate. And so all these elements were reviewed by both of those bodies and we found that all these future land use and future zonings didn't meet and were in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So that's one of the major elements of that. You'll also note there's an energy element. I just bring it to your attention because as a number of months ago, maybe last year, we added an energy element to our comprehensive plan. And so now you see that we talk about some alternative energy considerations for development and elements, and that comes directly from our comprehensive plan as well. But most of these are a baseline of what we're looking at. It gives an outline for potential developers to read through this plan to get an idea of what we estimate costs to be in regards to utility, extension, storm sewers, alleys, things of that nature, fire hydrants. And it kind of goes through those elements of what we would generally like to see. But as I noted previously, the first thing we'll do is when we have a developer come in or we decide to develop ourselves, we will come back with an amendment to this general plan and that'll be amendment A. And that'll be reviewed by all those considered bodies before and we'll start on a development project and that will give it access to TIF funding.
Questions? Rich?
I don't know if I should ask this now or later or whatever, but didn't the legislature have some kind of bill up there, if I remember correctly, that we had to go to the county on TIF funding to ask permission or such? Did that ever go through? Do we have to go to the county or county?
No, there was a couple of bills that were introduced this year, but those did not pass.
They didn't pass?
No. And notice was given to all the other tax entities that this was coming forward, so we've got all of our due notices.
Okay, all right, fine, because this is a good project.
Anything else?
Funding is...
From the council, anybody from the public? All right, Mr. Catlin, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:32 PM.
And moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:32 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. And then finally, it's a resolution, resolution number 5903, declaring the proposed redevelopment area number five as blighted and substandard.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5903 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that resolution number 5903 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. Resolution number 5904, to approve the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number five, has been passed and adopted. I'm sorry.
5903.
We passed 5903?
5903, beg your pardon. Next is resolution number 5904, to approve redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number five.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5904 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that resolution number 5904 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion on that item? From the public. And your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. This time, resolution number 5904 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance repealing city codes regarding fire reserve programs.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 16-018. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance, that said ordinance be given number 16-018. Title thereof be approved, rules be suspended, and ordinance be read by title only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that's approved eight zero. Ordinance number 16-018 by number the first time. Ordinance number 16-018 by number the second time. And ordinance number 16-018 the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 16-018 be passed and approv...
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance number 16-018 be passed and approved. Discussion.
A couple of months ago, we suspended the reserve program at the fire department for a couple different reasons and we're working, developing a new one. And during that process, we discovered they had some of these old city codes that were in the books, requiring meetings and officers and things like that that frankly, we hadn't done for years. And so in the process of developing that new one, we thought it was best to go ahead and clean the slate, get these ordinances out of here as we develop that new program and bring that forward here in the upcoming months.
Questions, anybody? From the public? Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number 16-018 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anybody from the city council have anything for the public forum? Anybody from the public? All right, next item on the agenda is discussion and reports. And the item is that we're going to talk about right now is citywide cleanup. And our street superintendent, Jason Moore, is with us tonight. Jason?
I think from looking at some of the numbers that you guys have got in your packet, you'll see that this year we had 1,345 loads that were picked up. I think if you look at some of these numbers, I think what it's gonna show you is the large amount of small items that we had to pick up. With the 1,345 loads, we had 410 man-hours that were put into this. We had less loads, but we had more hours. It took us more time to pick up the smaller items, get them into the trucks. You're gonna look back, I believe, about six, maybe six years before we seen more than that. You're gonna look back quite a few years before you see as many man-hours as we had to put in this year to pick up the amount of material that we had this year. If you look over at the amount of loads that we had, we had 163 loads. I believe you have to go back nine years before you see another amount of loads that high. I think it goes to show that the amount of material that we're picking up is not the large-scale items. It's the small garbage. And it shows by the amount of man-hours that we had to put in. It just took us longer to get the loads stacked in there and put in the trucks. A lot more smaller items. We had, of course, we had some furniture, we had quite a few mattresses that we had to pick up. But by and large, I think the majority of what we picked up was material that should have been put on the curb for sanitary to pick up. You know, it was a year we had about $1,000 more in cost. I believe you've probably got it broke down on your sheet that we had 120 tons of material that was taken into the landfill. If you do the math, at 120 tons, at 44.25 per ton, that's about 53.10 in lost revenue that was taken into the landfill this year. I believe last year we took about 123 tons in, so we're pretty close to what we took in last year. Again, last year, when I came to you guys, I think I told you we had a lot of garbage that was brought in last year also. So, you know, I think it's a good program. I think definitely everybody's seen from the article that was in the paper the other day that, you know, I think there's some, I think there's some issues that we need to take a look at based on health reasons for my workers and sanitary reasons, but I think it's something that, you know, we need to sit back and take a look at. I do believe that if you take, if you take the mattresses and furniture out of the equation, which we don't get white goods anymore, the white goods are washers, dryers, ovens, stoves, that type, you know, that type of material. If you take, if you take those out of the equation, which they get picked up before we ever get there. The scavengers will find those and they pick those up. If you take that material and you take the beds and the couches out, I believe about 70% of the material that my guys picked up was all stuff that should have been put on the curb for Beatrice sanitary to pick up. Again, we picked it up because of, it got to the point where we were gonna have so much material left in so many locations that we'd had things looking, it would have looked bad.
Jason, I know you've been a little disappointed the last couple of years in this process. Do you have any suggestions on how we move forward to further educate the public as to what type of a proposal we could come up with?
You know, I really thought this year that the boxes, the no boxes and no bags, that we had changed the program from last year, I really thought that was gonna help us out. In years previous to this, we would take bags if they were open. We would take boxes if they were open so that we could see inside to see what it was. After last year with the problems we had with the garbage, I thought no boxes, no bags would take care of that problem. All it did was, it made people stack things in piles. It's stuff that would have been in boxes and bags and that's where you see the amount of man-hours that went up so much because my guys were picking up small items and throwing them into the trucks. Because in years past, they would have been in boxes or bags. And now they were stacked up in piles with mattresses thrown over the top of them. And so, and a lot of the mattresses we get, you have to ask yourself, if you see that many mattresses that are getting thrown out, they're getting thrown out for a reason. And when you see that amount of mattresses that are getting thrown out, you know, you have to ask yourself, one, why? They can't all be bad. And two, you know, is it, is it safe for my guys? And I know all of you guys seen the article that was wrote in the paper about the Friday, the last Friday of Clean City. I had had a discussion with an exterminator that we have at the city and his comment was just very, we were just having a casual conversation and it just came up, you know, what sort of precautions are you taking for your guys with bedbugs? And it really hadn't dawned on me. Never really thought of this. Got to thinking about it a little bit. And in the last two years, we have seen a tremendous amount of bedbugs that have came into the landfill. And exterminators will bring mattresses out to the landfill. They will actually take it to the open face of the landfill. They will saturate it in killer and then we will bury them right there. We cover it up right there and then. So when he, when he brought this up, we got to talking about the bedbug issue a little bit. And I told him, you know, how we had a large amount of mattresses that had came in this year. And he said, "Your mattresses are one thing, but your couches and recliners are another because the bugs actually get into the crevices of the furniture and you'll see it just as much in the furniture as you will as the bedding." After discussing with him a little bit about what we were looking at, you know, you know, I think it definitely means that we need to take a look at Clean City about possibly changing a few things. And I think Tobias and I and the mayor, we've discussed a few things a little here and there about possibilities of keeping Clean City going, but yet changing it a little bit so that it helps with, you know, the safety of my workers.
Any questions, Jason?
I don't really have any questions. I think it's a good program and I'd hate to see it go away. My wife and I never utilized it before, but this year we had scheduled a pickup and like you said, everything was gone. Next, you know. And I guess the need is great. But we had a mattress in Box Springs that we set out just because we had, and someone took that as well, so... But part of the things that we had set out, I had set out to the curb in weeks past for sanitary garbage to pick up and they were either too heavy or they didn't do it. So, you know, I put them back in the garage and waited for you guys. I like the idea of the amnesty thing. I, you know, I would have, you know, one of the items I had set in my garage from December waiting for this because I never had a chance to get out to the landfill.
I think one of the Board of Public Works members brought up an amnesty.
Well, I would suggest that on multiple occasions throughout the year.
You would have to...
I like that.
Where you would, you would like give them a coupon so that you don't have three miles of a line on that particular day.
But the thing is, you know, not everybody has the ability to do that. You know, not everybody's strong enough to put it in the back truck or doesn't know how to pick up to utilize or all those, you know, different things. I'd hate to see the program go away. I think it's very useful for the community.
It could complement each other, however.
Yeah, I totally agree. And, but, and if the scrappers are picking up your white goods, that means they're not going to the landfill and that's a good thing as well.
Oh, and white goods don't go into the landfill. Even if they do come to us, we take them out.
Right, yeah, recycling. So I, and I understand your guys' concerns about bedbugs, but, you know, you can pick them up, stand in line at McDonald's or Subway from somebody that's got them on their jacket or their feet next to you that brushes up against you, you know, so. And I know you want to eliminate a cause or an opportunity, you know, an opportunity, and I get that, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's part of the job.
Well, it is, it is. But anytime you're putting mattresses and furniture up against your chest and you're putting it into a dumpster, you have an increased chance.
Absolutely, and you want to reduce the risk of...
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely, I get that.
And I do like, I do like the Amnesty Day or a couple of days. I think the Amnesty Days gives us the possibility that we, not only do we, we don't have to worry about the piles in front of the houses in town. We may not have to worry about the people going around picking up and scattering debris in yards as they dig through piles. It keeps, you know, it keeps things a little cleaner because you don't see all the piles out there a week or so in advance. I think there's definitely some things that we need to look at about the amnesty. There's definite things that my crew at the landfill will have to do because we will have to inspect every load that comes in to make sure the material's not coming into the landfill that we cannot take. But, but I think that by doing that, even if we do this two days a year, I still think that that, we could save on man-hours, equipment miles, equipment hours. I think we could definitely, we could make something work with that.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? Anybody from the public?
Guys did a great job.
Yes, you guys did, really did.
As always. Thank you very much. All right, did you have anything else, Tobias?
No, sir.
Okay, our next regular city council meeting is on Monday, May 16th in these chambers. And then we'll have a work session on May 23rd. Both meetings start at 7:00. Mr. Catlin, I recommend that the city council go into executive session.
Mayor, I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:47 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate and contract negotiations.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbach, that we go into executive session at 7:47 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero.
Seven one.
Beg your pardon. Seven one, beg your pardon. Through for a loop there, buddy.